This conference will now be recorded.
Now that we're recording, I will call the Thurston Conservation District Board of Supervisors Special Meeting for June 8th to order. With us today, we have supervisors Doug Rushton, Helen Wheatley, myself, TJ Johnson. As I mentioned earlier, David Ayew will not be joining us today. He's got a tribal activity to attend to. And we don't see Betsy yet, but expect her to be here. We have our staff members, Sarah Moorhead, our Executive Director. We have Kellogg and Kiana Sinner. And we also have Tom Beckwith, our Conservation Education Center consultant. So welcome, Tom. And with that, we have an agenda review and approval up front here. And there was a suggestion, I think from Doug, to move the CEC. Doug, did you want to move that up to the first thing on the agenda?
Yes, I think that would be best. At least if I was Mr. Beckwith, that's what I would have left, I think.
Yeah.
To use some more time. So that's a motion.
Just want to double check with Kiana to make sure that that's okay with her and she doesn't have a pressing obligation to get to.
That's just fine on my end.
Okay, thanks for your flexibility, Kiana. Okay, with that then, and I noticed we just had Susan Shelton, our Finances Director, join us, and Betsy DeBreda is now here too. So we have four or five board members here.
We were in the wrong meeting.
Well, you're in the right one now, so we're glad about that. Okay, so with that one change to move the discussion of the CEC up immediately after where we are right now, is there a motion to approve that agenda?
TJ, I actually have one more recommended change.
Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
I'd like to remove item five, or the new five, which is the Zangle Cove Bulkhead Removal Project from this list. We're still in negotiations about the contract with the consultant, and that's not ready for board review and approval today.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, that was the reason we had this as a special meeting as opposed to a work session, or was there something else?
No, that was the original intent of this being a special meeting was for this approval. We anticipated having that ready by this time, and we're just not quite there. It should be on the June board meeting. Instead, what's nice, though, about this as a special meeting versus a work session is that the board is now also able to take action on things like the board officer elections as well as hold the executive session. So it still serves some purpose.
Okay, good. Okay, so with those two changes, moving CEC up to number two, deleting the Zangle Cove Bulkhead item, is there a motion to approve this amended agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Doug, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Helen, we will do a roll call vote. Doug?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Here votes aye, we have approved our agenda. That then does take us to the Conservation and Education Center. Sarah, are you going to kick this one off?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I'm happy to start this piece. I'm really excited for this step here. And the first item on our list before we deliver our letter of award and we get to officially, you know, meet the board-selected consultant for our Conservation Education Center feasibility study is a moment of public comment. So I think it would be great if the chair wants to open it up for a public comment. And I'll also note that I don't see any other members of the public on the call.
Nor do I, but in order to be transparent and open, I will open public comment on this item. If there's anyone that wishes to address the board on this item, this would be the time to do so. Is there anyone out there that wishes to address the board? Hearing none and seeing nobody from the public on our participant list, I will close public comment and will move to item two, be the delivery of the letter of award, delivery of letter of award.
Great, thank you so much, TJ. I'm clicking around on my screen to pull that up, but of course, we'll get a copy of this over to you, Tom. But at the May board meeting, the Board of Supervisors selected Beckwith Consulting to conduct the Conservation and Education Center feasibility study. So I'll put that letter of award on the screen here so that we can see it. And again, of course, this will be sent to you as well. So just noting that after the evaluation team met, we were really pleased that Beckwith came out on top in terms of the scoring criteria. And so part of inviting Tom to this special meeting was to give an opportunity for the board and Tom to have some conversation and to meet each other officially, learn a little bit more about each other, and ask any questions. And then this will officially sort of kick off our sort of contract negotiations process. We did receive the cost and timeline proposal from Tom last week that was sent out to the board to review. And so next steps for the board side is to have some more conversation about that, and that will help inform staff in our direction under the contract negotiation process. So I think it would be great if we could turn it over to you, Tom, to introduce yourself to our Board of Supervisors and then have some dialogue and answer any questions that they may have or ask any questions that you might have, Tom.
Sure, that sounds fine. As I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, there were going to be four of us from the team on this go-to-meeting session, and three of my team members have got commitments that took them out of town and on the road. So you have me to deal with today. But we're very excited to be able to do this, and the team members in particular are very excited because we've done these kinds of studies before and we think that they have some great potentials that we would like to be involved in helping you achieve. I did send a budget and a Gantt chart that listed all the tasks. And maybe if you would like, we can go over any questions you may have on those tasks or on our scope or on our approach.
Sarah, is it possible to put that Gantt chart up on the screen here so we can take a look at it in order to remind ourselves of where we're headed with this thing? Thank you.
Perfect. You can see we listed five tasks. You can see that, I can't see that now. There we go. So the review process, really we want to conduct a workshop with you. Hopefully, we could do that in person. Our projects now are getting to the point where we can have in-person meetings. Everybody on the team has been vaccinated, and I'm the last one to clear the quarantine with some family members this week. We want to review what you've done on your previous needs assessments. We'd like to interview your key staff and have you identify any community stakeholders that should be involved in kind of the initial outreach. And during task two, the outreach would be kind of open-ended. We know you've done a needs assessment. What do you think of it? What do you think the vision for the future is? What do you think some of the issues you identified in the needs assessment are most important? In task three, we want to look at other conservation education centers. And I know your RFP said the Pacific Northwest, but we think there are some that are outside this area that may be good prototypes to look at. In fact, probably the premier that we think of in the Pacific Northwest is right here in Mount Vernon. It's the WSU Experimental Station. It has almost everything you've identified in your needs, including commercial kitchens showing and teaching people how to use some of the crops we're growing here in Skagit County. But we not only want to inventory of what they are, we want to be able to talk to some of their managers and some of their key staff and get some information on what they think worked and did not work, so that we can build that into your kind of your comparable analysis. In task four, we want to take a look at what's available. And we've found based on experience that if you put out an RFP that lists what your issues and what your ideal site and parameters are, that there are sleeper properties out there that will come to the fore that would not normally be available on the market otherwise. What we've done is advertise those in Seattle Daily Journal of Commerce, in the newspapers in Thurston County, then sent flyers around to your major real estate brokers. And the issue probably in that task four is just how many sites and how varied are they that show up. So we need to do a fairly due diligence analysis of what shows up so that you have a good ranking and a good analysis of what some of those could or couldn't do as far as your needs assessments are concerned. In that, we'll develop the cost of adapting what your shortlist might be, and then taking a look at some of the operating and the maintenance issues for a six to 20-year life cycle. And then, of course, the last is to issue that report. And what we include in that is an action plan that says, if this is your preferred site and this is your preferred program, then what are the tasks necessary for you to acquire the property, to adapt or build the property to meet what you want to do? How long will it take? Who will be involved? And what are the key implementation measures necessary to get that done? I listed the key staff. You can see we're a very diverse and kind of multidisciplinary group. So we have every skill, and every skill in that team has worked on our projects and has worked on similar kinds of projects to what you're trying to do. We think we can do this done in five months, but the first thing we would do is be to take these key tasks and put them on a calendar and match that calendar to one that's convenient for you to meet and your staff to be available and your stakeholders to be available. And then we work against that calendar. The last is the budget. That's a healthy budget. We think we can do everything that's within that budget. The only kind of open-ended issue would be 4A, and that would be how many properties we look at. Now, we don't have to look at every property that shows up. You will find very quickly, you can screen out some that don't apply. And what we want to do then is focus on the ones that you think are the best prospects for us to do. We usually, I'll lift up the subtitles. We usually do this lump sum guaranteed against the maximum, and then we work against those budget numbers and against those calendar dates we established from the beginning. That's a summary, I think, of what was in our proposal. You have questions of us, and then I may have a few of you.
Okay, let's start with board member questions, and I'll just call on everybody. We'll go around here, give everybody a chance if they have them. And since I see you first on my screen, I'll start with you, Doug.
No, I have no questions. Good presentation. It's clear. The steps are outlined, timeline. I think that's good.
Okay, Helen?
Well, I was most curious about the property RFP process, but I thought that was explained pretty well, so I'm going to take a pass too.
Okay.
Okay, how about Betsy?
I'm just curious if there are any other areas where you think we could shorten the process thereby saving any other costs?
I don't know until we have a chance to sit down with you at a workshop and go over the scope. Some of the things we need to know is how many stakeholders we need to include in the interviews and gather the information from, how much public outreach you want to do versus what we proposed in the proposal, how far you want to take the implementation measures. Normally, we say don't get too detailed into design issues and so on until you've made your key strategic decisions. So those would be things I think that we would want to look at and discuss with you as we resolve a final contract and scope.
Thank you.
That sound right to you?
Yeah, I was a little surprised that it would take a week and a half full-time equivalent for the, for 1A, because you probably don't know how many of our staff and so on would need to be spoken with.
Well, 1A includes also bi-weekly review sessions as we work through the process. So yes, there's a kickoff meeting and a retreat to kind of go over the scope and the particulars. But also, bi-weekly, we will be checking in with you to make sure that we're on tack, that we're the kinds of materials we're generating for you, what you're looking for and whether you want to modify any of the following tasks based on what we've found so far. So it includes all that time. That's about eight meetings over the course of four months.
Okay.
Does that explain that?
Yeah, okay. I didn't understand that. I think I just kind of missed the word progress and was thinking it was just the opening, introduction, query period, but I understand that. Thank you.
Well, we don't mind doing that, but see if that's the way you want to do it.
Okay. I also, I don't have any questions at this point, but Tom, you said you might have some questions for us, so I'd like to turn it back to you and see what you want to know from us.
I see Helen might have a follow-up, TJ.
Sorry, I missed that. Go ahead, Helen.
Oh, no worries. Yeah, I did have one question. It's, you know, I'm the least familiar, I guess, with the land part of this. So I don't really understand what 4C is, document life cycle implications. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. What we're looking at in the life cycle is what are your operating costs? What are your utilities, your custodial? What are all the annual costs that you're going to have to pay to operate your facility? And by life cycle, we're saying we've run that out over 20 years so we can see what that's accumulating to. It's on an annual basis, how much cash you have to generate to meet those requirements. So we don't want to just take a look at developing a facility and say, hey, this is a construction cost now, you know, we'll go away and you're on your own. The life cycle is to take a look at everything. So we're not only have whatever your costs are to buy and build your facility, but to operate it.
Follow-up, if I could follow up on that. So you're talking about a 20-year horizon, and I'm assuming that's some sort of industry standard, but to me, that seems like a pretty short lifetime for a facility. I think we certainly envision something that's going to meet our needs and be around a lot longer than that.
Well, of course. The only reason we use 20 years is that's usually key to what most municipal budgetary processes are. Usually, they have an immediate six-year, and then they have a 20-year based on bonds or whatever it is they're using for financing. I think the key implication of the life cycle is your least cost is going to be to acquire and develop your facility. Over 20 years or 30 years or whatever time period you take, your real costs are going to be staff and operating, because they're going to escalate each year versus your, however we find your way of acquiring and developing your facility, those are going to be fixed costs once you've established however you're going to pay or finance it. So we like to take a look at that escalating cost more or less profile. And we also like to put the building and the property in proper perspective. Usually, there's a tendency to want to try to shave costs on those facilities or on the building process, and we say that may not be the best place to be cost-efficient if it adversely impacts staff productivity or customer access or some of the other operational issues which are more important long-term.
Okay, that makes sense. Harkening back to my days in the city council in Olympia, I remember the six-year CFPs and the 20-year comprehensive plans, and yeah, so that makes sense to me. We do it a little different at conservation districts, but I can understand that that's sort of how the approach is most commonly used. Sarah, I see you have a question next?
Yeah, if I can tag on really quickly before I Florida, Tom. I appreciate this matrix really helpful to see where time and expenses are allocated, and I really look forward to meeting with you again, Tom, more in-depth after this so we can unpack some of these line items and really ensure that the scope and the specifics in how some of these were put together make sense for this project and with conservation districts, like the financing structure for the design life piece that we were just talking about and some of the nuances within the districts. One of the questions I had most immediately, though, was around the property RFP. There's a couple of particular community opportunities that have been shared with the district over the last couple of years. So there's some specific partners and some specific opportunities and ideas, and I'm wondering how we can integrate sort of analysis of those as well as sort of this more open-ended RFP process?
Well, we think you're going to do both. If you have property prospects right now, certainly they should be analyzed. The only reason we suggest the RFP is it's a pretty simple way of making sure that you have every choice available that potentially could be put on the market. And we don't want to just go look for exotic properties. We want real choices for you. It's just that we found that the RFP oftentimes turns up things which are, could be very attractive, but what you just don't know about because they don't know that you're looking. So it's kind of an insurance policy.
Yeah, I really appreciate that approach.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. So Tom, do you have some questions for us?
Well, I think the key things when we have time is we need to know on task two, for example, who you think your potential stakeholders or partners or joint venture or volunteers would be, so that we make sure we get their perspective. So we need to know who they are and who you want us to interview and contact and have some sessions with. The second is when we look at other education centers, we think that we need to develop some pretty extensive information, but then sit down with you and have you sort through and say, well, this one fits what we want to do and this one doesn't. This one, I understand the lessons they're telling us to avoid, those types of things. So task three is pretty important before you settle upon what your clear needs and preferences are. And then task four, I think we've covered that to a certain extent. I think the only thing about the design and development options is sometimes there's a tendency to go too far with the design at this stage of the process. You only need to go far enough to make a decision and get your financing options set up and so on. So of course, we'd want to take a look at that. We'd want to know what properties you already have available or have already identified. That will help a lot for us to begin to scope that. So those are the key questions, I think, that occurred to us right off the bat.
Yeah, and those are great questions and clearly ones that we haven't spent a lot of time as a board talking about, and are going to need to spend some time doing that in the short term here, maybe at our upcoming board meeting later this month. Carving out some time for those. Particularly, I think, from my perspective, identifying those stakeholders and getting a group that's robust enough to give good perspective, but isn't so many people that it becomes unwieldy and drags the process or the budget in ways that we don't want to. So that's, there's going to be some give and take, I think, as we try to sort through that piece.
Our only experience is, one, if there's a big group that you want us to contact, we'll break them into smaller groups, do multiple sessions. But if you're looking for them to be viable partners later on, either financially or with voluntary efforts or something, you need to make sure that they've had an opportunity to weigh in and feel that they're identified. Otherwise, they're going to be skeptical when you ask them to turn around and ask them for something. I think somebody told me once that if you go out and ask for money, you get advice. If you go out and ask for advice, you get money, meaning it's a different approach. Get them involved in there, and if they think it's their idea as well as yours, they're going to be there for the long term.
Other comments, questions from board members? Okay, not hearing or seeing any here, so I think our next steps at least are clear on our end. Tom, we as a board need to wrestle with a couple of those questions that you just raised, and we need to give some direction to Sarah in terms of going back and really negotiating some of this stuff and figuring out some of the specifics with you. And I think that's something that we can certainly do, hopefully at our June board meeting or at the latest at our July work session.
That sounds fine. You let us know what you need. We're very interested in working on this project. It sounds like not only very interesting, but a lot of fun.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to be with us today and look forward to meeting your other team members when they're back in the state and focused back on the project.
I'm interested in getting back with them too, so.
I bet you are. Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Right. Sarah, can we get back to our agenda? There we go. Okay. Tom's left the meeting. Anything, anybody wants to add to this before we move on? Does it sound like, so my suggestion was that we carve out some time at the board meeting to wrestle with some of these questions. Does that make sense to folks?
Yeah, I'm wondering, TJ, if the board would like to approve me to work with Tom in the interim to continue to suss out that next layer of detail and information that is really needed from the board? That way, when the board has that opportunity to have conversation, you have a comprehensive list of sort of tasks or needs for board direction all at once? Would the board feel comfortable with that?
Any objections to that? Okay, I see none, hear none. So that's a yes, Sarah. So you and Tom can do some scoping.
I would like to get.
Go ahead, Doug.
I would like to get a copy of the timeline and tasks that were just shown. Give it a little more thought.
Yeah, I can resend that, no problem.
Okay, so Sarah, you'll work with Tom a little bit and come back to us with some specifics. I see your hand, Helen, you're up.
This is a really terrible random thought, but I did notice that among the list of potential property options that were listed in the longer presentation, the port was not on that list. And, you know, I hesitate to say it, but it is some vague potential for the port to possibly be a partner on this.
Particularly depending on the outcome of two port elections next fall.
Right. Well, I think the port on that list.
Yes, agreed. Okay, with that then, let's go ahead and move on to item three, our staff presentation on the Veterans Conservation Corps crew. We'll turn it over to Kiana for, you know, somewhere 10 or 15 minutes. Kiana with questions, if that works for you?
Yes, that sounds great. I will pull up my screen right now. Okay. Can everybody see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Now we can.
Great. So hi, everybody. Thanks for having me this afternoon. I'm excited to share a little bit about our new Veterans Conservation Corps crew. So in case you are unfamiliar with the Veterans Conservation Corps, it's a program that's offered through the Department of Veteran Affairs, and it's a counseling and wellness program designed for veterans who are interested in performing meaningful outdoor work. Members have the opportunity to give back to their community through habitat or farm-related projects, and many of the members that join the VCC are actually really interested in continuing their career or beginning their career in the natural resource field. And so this program really allows them that opportunity to make connections with natural resource professionals as well as learn the needed skills to be successful in this career path. So when the opportunity to partner with the Department of Veteran Affairs through their Conservation Corps program presented itself, we jumped on it. I know that Sarah has been in communication with the Department of Veteran Affairs for several years, I think, kind of looking for ways that we could partner and ways we could support veterans in our community. And so this year, when TCD began working on the huge restoration project on the Schuylkill River, which I think many of you had the opportunity to tour recently, that big project needed year-round work, and the VA had individuals in our area that were interested in joining a habitat restoration crew. So both of our organizations' missions aligned, and we found a great way to partner. And we're really happy. And we're really happy this all worked out because we have an amazing crew now that have done a really great job supporting our project on the Skookamchuk River. Right now, so this picture is of two of our crew members. We just added a third recently, so he's not pictured here, but we have our two crew members, Chris and TJ, who are in this photo, and they started with us in the beginning of April, and then Mike just started last week. So all three of our crew members bring a plethora of skills to our crew. They all have experience working on teams as well as leading teams. We have a member who is an EMT and has that extensive hazardous waste training, as well as a member who's an experienced teacher. So all three of the crew members bring excitement and passion to learn the work that we're doing, so they have been really great. So I talked a little bit about our project at the Skookamchuk River, and I know many of you had the opportunity to go out there and learn all about it from Mara. But this is the main project that our VCC crew works on. It's really exciting and an awesome place for our crew to learn the work that we do because they have an opportunity to do a little bit of everything. So this is a multi-year, large-scale project that encompasses lots of different kinds of habitat projects. So we've had the crew beginning in April, so for a little over two months, and they've already had the opportunity to do many different activities. And the largest task this far has been invasive plant removal. And this kind of happens in several different ways, and all of which they've had the opportunity to try. So they've done manual removal, so digging and cutting plants, grubbing out blackberry, things like that. They've done mechanical removal, which includes, you know, brush cutting down big brambles or mowing pasture grasses. And they've also had the opportunity to do chemical control, which includes using herbicide, which is a tool in our toolbox on a big project like this, and can be important in certain Another couple of things we've worked on at the Skookamchuk Project include installing plant protectors and mulching existing plantings. And so these restoration methods can help control invasive weeds from shading out newly installed plantings. So that's kind of a fun task that they've got to work on over the last couple of months. And then in the coming months, our crew is going to have the opportunity to engage with other organizations and assist them with existing projects that they have going on. So a few of those are going to take place with Capital Land Trust on their properties, and crew members are going to have the opportunity to remove old fencing that is impeding wildlife and also build a beaver-deceiver, which is pretty cool. And so these are going to serve as other really great learning opportunities for the crew members. So all of our members really love the outdoors and are interested in learning all that they can about the natural world, which is really great. A couple of our crew members are planning to create careers in the natural resource field. One is in school right now, taking environmental science classes, working towards his degree in that, and he's expressed that the hands-on work of being a part of the VCC crew and work in tandem with the classes he's taking have really helped him excel in his studies. They've also mentioned that doing this work has concreted the fact that they want this to be their career. And I'm personally really passionate about teaching, so it's been a really wonderful opportunity for me to get to mentor individuals who want to learn and are extremely excited about everything they're learning. Some of the things that we've had the opportunity to teach the crew would be plant identification as well as various techniques used in restoration. So those are, you know, how to control invasive plants, prepare areas to be planted with new trees and shrubs, and then in a few months, we'll be actually planting those trees and shrubs, which is a really fun thing to do. And so to be successful doing these different kinds of projects, we have to, you know, learn how to use really specific tools correctly and how to do that safely. And so the crew has had the opportunity to learn how to use kind of small machines like brush cutters and how to take them apart and put them back together and make sure they know how to fix it as issues come up. So those skills are really valuable for a lot of different kinds of careers. And another skill that the crew is learning is how to effectively communicate what they do and why they do it with the public. And so this is really important and is invaluable to them as they continue their career in this field of work. They've kind of got their spiel down for when we're working at, one of the portions of this project site on the Skookamchuk River is in a public fishing area, and so they get the opportunity to talk about how the work we're doing is creating, you know, healthier salmon populations with local anglers. So that's kind of a cool piece of what we do. And then, as I mentioned before, the crew came into this with really great teamwork and leadership skills. They're extremely cohesive, and the fact that they have these skills and that they have a commitment to expanding them is why they're doing such an amazing job. So we really wanted this internship to be educational and also super fun for all of the crew members, so we've set aside time to ensure that they get to participate in learning activities that directly correlate to the important work that we're doing with them. And so some of these fun activities have included attending the salmon recovery conference and watching the documentary, A Watershed Moment. These activities gave crew members like a big-picture look at what we were doing and why we were doing it, and they were able to learn about the Chehalis River Basin and how the work that we're doing on the Skookamchuk River, which is a tributary of the Chehalis River, is so impactful to the larger basin. They were also able to learn about additional salmon recovery work happening in Washington State, and they shared, multiple different members shared that this, you know, learning and getting to attend these different conferences and watching this documentary was really inspiring and invigorating for them as they are out there working every day, doing kind of grunt work. It helps them see the big picture and why they're doing what they're doing. Members also recently had the opportunity to visit Glacial Heritage Preserve, where they could see a healthy, functioning oak woodland, which is something that we're striving to create on the Skookamchuk Project. So members shared that this experience helped them visualize what they were spending so much time creating and helped give them perspective why what they were doing was so invaluable. So that was a pretty cool thing. We also got to visit the seed farm down there in Tenino, and that's where these two pictures of the balsam root and the, well, the lupin was taken at Glacial Heritage, but they have really cool place there, and they showed us how they do native seed collection. So that was a pretty fun activity as well. So I would like to just end by acknowledging how great our crew is, the quality and quantity of their work is really exceptional, and so kudos goes out to them for, you know, making all this work possible and doing an amazing job. And so if anyone has questions, I am happy to take those.
Questions for Kiana?
Hi, Kiana, this is Doug. It seems like the faces, the two faces you showed us are different from the faces on the tour. Did one of the guys leave?
Yes, so we did have, we began with four members, and unfortunately, two members had to leave due to health reasons. So we added a new member recently, and we're still recruiting for a fourth member.
Yeah, I see. Thank you.
Yeah.
TJ, can I just add one comment?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I just really appreciate Kiana's work on this. Her passion for mentoring and supporting the veterans population has really made this program possible at the Conservation District. We wouldn't have been able to do this work at all if Kiana hadn't taken the lead on this and dedicated a lot of time to this and really transitioned and transformed on top of all of her other responsibilities to adapt to create this program. She's revolutionized a lot of, I think, how districts interact with VCC crews. She's created a really excellent mentorship and training handbook that other conservation districts can utilize. I've shared it with the Department of Veterans Affairs, so they can use it in their conversations with other conservation districts as tools. It's really centered and focusing on eco-therapy and training and mentorship, recognition of service of these volunteers, and just caring for them as individuals and as professionals entering a new workforce. So it's just really well done, and I really want to commend Kiana for all of her work on this because it's just outstanding. So thank you, Kiana. A couple of other opportunities this has opened up for us are, I mentioned a couple months back, that we're now doing sort of a partner support program, which is a fee-for-service model because of this VCC crew, where we're able to help elevate other local NGOs that don't have access to work crews like this that help support our conservation mission. So we're helping to elevate and support our community partners and further our mission and our strategic plan goals for conservation and restoration by working in small projects on other conservation properties. An example of that is a partnership with Capital Land Trust, where they have, you know, debris removal or invasive species removal projects and tasks that they need to occur on their land trust properties but struggle to find access to the labor to do that. We're able to create this partnership where they cover the costs of this, and we're able to support them with that labor. And so this is also a really great funding source for us just to continue to make this a sustainable endeavor. We're trialing this work crew for this year-long contract specifically or primarily focused on the Skookamchuk Project work. But what we want to do, of course, is make this a sustainable program into the future, continue to have restoration projects at TCD that this supports and other partners so that we can continue to offer this really enriching opportunity. It's just been a great experience all the way around, and so it's been really exciting to see this come to fruition. One of the things that we've noted and identified is really how much mentorship and sort of leadership time is involved in facilitating this on our TCD staff, and so that's a cost that we're going to be looking at in the future in sort of building that in our staffing capacity to have additional support there, because certainly Kiana does so many different jobs and positions and roles at the Conservation District, and so we really need to make sure that we're not burning her out and that we are supporting all of these programs to their fullest extent. So thank you so much, Kiana, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that's true for the board, too. I think we're excited that this program is taking place and creating these opportunities and these new partnerships, and it strikes me that this would be a very great story to tell at the WACD conference later this year and to share what we're doing and our model with some of the other districts around the state. So I hope Kiana, Sarah, maybe think about putting in a workshop proposal and trying to do something like that at WACD.
That's a great idea, and we could partner with Snow Homish. They also have a robust VCC crew. I agree, this would be great. Good idea, TJ.
Okay.
That's what, when I first heard about it, was from Snow Homish, so yeah.
Great. Thanks for taking some time out of your day to be with us, Kiana. Good to see you virtually, and hopefully we'll all be back together in the same place later this summer. So thanks so much.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
Thanks, Kiana.
Okay, next up, we have some minutes to look at. First, oop, disappeared there. Coming back, I'm sure.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was trying to make Leah the presenter, but I didn't realize that would stop my screen share.
Okay, we're going to look at the last board meeting minutes first, May 27th. We can get those up?
Sarah, yes, they're right here. Can you guys see that? No?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Sorry, pardon me. Keep trying to share. Sarah, am I? It's telling me I can't.
Yeah, I did make you presenter. We had him up, but we'll switch back to the agenda.
This is the darndest thing. Okay, here we go, here we go. Okay.
Okay. Is there a way to make that big enough that we can actually read it?
I believe so, yes.
You can scroll with your mouse and make it bigger by putting it close to the edge.
There we go. Was that big enough?
Yes, that's better. Thank you. Okay, we'll go through this page by page. Are there any, and these were sent out, so we've all had a chance to look at them. Are there any comments on page one? Not hearing any on page one.
Hold on, I have, this is today's, there we go, this is the board meeting, I'm sorry. We were just looking at our meeting that I was typing up.
Yes. Okay, so there we go, page two. Any comments on page two? Page three, which is where we're, yep, page three. Comments on page three? Almost like we have this system down now. Page four? Okay, any further comments at all? Any comments at all on these?
I congratulate for being able to sort out what occurred over the agenda at the beginning. Very.
Yeah.
Okay, we will move those then to our consent agenda at the June board meeting. Now let's go back to the May, I believe it was May 11 work session. Take a look at those real quick. Is that that date wrong, maybe?
May 13th? Yes.
13th, okay, there we go. Our abbreviated works, I guess this is a little longer because it was a special meeting, but any comments on the first page of these minutes from May 13th special meeting? Not on page one. How about page two? How about page three? How about page four? Yeah, Betsy?
I am pretty distracted by the background noise going on here, and I, my notes are not clear as, I have a bunch of notes, but they're not clear what they relate to, I'm sorry, and we did have some corrections. So could we go to line 35? Just so I can see where, and hold it for a second. Okay, so never mind, they're not for this. Thank you for indulging me.
Other questions? Betsy, or was that it?
Well, I remember recollection that May 13, I think, was the one where there was a question at the beginning relating to whether David was late and whether the vote said should be four to zero or five. I had mentioned that, and then maybe got corrected.
And that was on the, that was on the which vote, Betsy?
Yeah, I think that's there. Okay, yeah, because David was late.
Right, so it shows on line 24 that it was a four to zero vote on that contract, and then David, as I recall, David appeared right after that vote.
Yeah, okay. And does it say in there that he appeared? Because it should, shouldn't it?
Would you like me to include that moving forward?
Yeah, I think that would be useful to note when, if someone arrives late, when they arrive, so it's clear what actions they were present for and which they weren't.
And is something as simple as supervisor, I all arrived fine?
Arrived at this point in the meeting.
And then I would list the time, which would be like. And then, I would list the time, which would be like, I don't know, 5:50. I'll go back and check. But you'd like the actual time to be included as well?
I don't, I don't know that we need the time. I think we just need to see where he arrived in terms of the flow of the work.
Got it.
Okay, thanks, Betsy. That was, that's good. Anything else on these special meeting minutes from May 13th?
No, but I am caught up now. I'm really sorry. Could we please go back to the May 27? Maybe they, maybe somebody else sticks them. I was scrambling. There's a place where it said nature and it should say natural, for example?
Which line were we, do we know which line we're on?
34.
Nature, resource, and natural, I see it.
Yep.
I didn't like the wording on line 64, but I guess you all thought it was okay, so.
Hey?
I just thought it was weird to say, the thing about the, we would allow public access to the building, but not to public meetings, and that seemed unclear. So, that was line, oh, sorry, so someone did reword it already.
Are you okay with the new wording?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. So, with that, we will put both the May 13th special meeting minutes and the May board meeting minutes on our consent agenda for the June meeting. Thank you. Get back to, there we go. So, next item up here, item five, Board Officer Elections. It's that time of year again, and we have a chair, a vice chair, and a board auditor to elect. So, I will open that up for discussion, nominations, and action.
This is Doug.
Do we know anything about David's willingness to continue as auditor?
Did you say that? Say that again, Betsy?
Do we know anything about David's desire or lack of to continue as auditor?
Sarah, do you have any insight into that?
It's been a while since I've spoken with David, but he had, last I had heard, he indicated that he was still interested in serving as auditor unless someone else was interested in stepping into that role.
But since you raised that one first, why don't we take these positions one at a time? And let's, let's, since we're on auditor, let's take an action on electing an auditor for the next year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll nominate David Iall to be auditor for the upcoming year.
Okay, moved by Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Helen, so any further discussion? Probably not. We'll vote on that. Maker of the motion, Doug, how do you vote?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Here votes aye. David has been reelected as auditor for another year. Let's move back up to the top of the list and go for chair. Is there a motion for electing a chair for the coming year?
This is Doug again. Being as I talked with you earlier and your willing, I will nominate you, I make a motion to nominate you, TJ, to be chair for the upcoming year.
Okay, Doug has nominated me. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Betsy. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I've got a list of grievances, TJ, so I'll be sending those to you. No, that's a joke.
Okay, well, I was having second thoughts there for a second, Doug.
No, I think you've done a fine job. I think the stuff moves along just great, and we're hitting high points, and we have raised the bar for the Thurston Conservation District substantially.
Well, thank you. And I will note, and I'm willing to do this another year, I also note that this is the final year of my three-year term. So, you know, I'll do it for another year. We'll see what happens after that. So, with that, let's see, we'll take the vote. Doug, maker of the motion, how do you vote?
Aye.
Betsy, the seconder?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And I guess I'll vote yes for myself, too. So, there you go. I guess I'm chair for another year. That leaves our last position here, vice chair. Is there a motion on electing a vice chair?
I would like to nominate Helen. I haven't spoken to her about it, but I think of her as an excellent candidate to move into the chair position, so I'm looking ahead.
Yikes. Oh, Betsy, don't you want to do it another year?
I'm willing to do it another year. I have no intention of stepping into the chair position, however.
Oh, I see.
I don't know that there's that much that I'm learning that would facilitate that, so maybe it's not.
Well, I guess my hesitance is that I am, I am pretty involved with the TRPC stuff. So, so I want to continue serving in that capacity as the TRPC liaison. I don't know, how much time does vice chairing take?
Hardly any.
Just chairing meetings occasionally when?
And signing a document once in a while.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to do it for another year. You know, that said, you know, yeah, it doesn't require a lot. I'm happy to. And TJ stepped right into chair without any prior, you know, his other prior experience was what made it good, a good fit for him, and you have.
Well, TJ-
A year from now, anyway, so.
Right. Are you, so you have just next year left, TJ? Is that it?
My turn, yeah. TJ and I came out.
Yeah, both, both Betsy and I, yeah, we're entering year three of a three-year term.
Yeah. Well, I suppose it's logical, then, for me, as being, you know, earlier on the cycle to step into an officer ship. So, yeah, okay. Just with-
Okay. So, Betsy, do you want to make that motion now?
I move that we nominate Helen Wheatley as the vice chair.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Betsy, seconded by Doug. We'll take a vote. Betsy?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye, aye, aye.
And chair votes aye. So, Helen has been elected as vice chair for the coming year.
Congratulations to all of you.
Yay, Helen.
Well, Doug, I know you probably served in all these positions at one time or another, so thank you for your past service.
And I guess, I think it goes without saying that one reason I didn't suggest you is because you're doing so much with the other aspects of your work, you know, with the state, so.
Okay.
I do have one question. How do I raise my hand with go to meeting?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a tricky one. You have to click on the participants, the people icon, and then you should see at the bottom of that screen, a little blue hand you can raise.
No, I don't see it. All I see is copy section and link.
Well, I will look into that from the participant side, because my side looks different than yours, and I will include some instructions via email.
Okay, and I will just continue to interrupt people. I'm sorry about that.
It's working so far. Okay, let's move on to item six, the COVID health update, and specifically, our draft office reopening plan. Sarah?
Yeah, thank you so much. We've got a little bit of to unpack and review here, and I'm really excited to have some of this conversation with you guys, because this is sort of some first steps at opening our building, at being publicly accessible, and, you know, at getting sort of back to some normalcy in our daily work, which is really exciting. We recognized a lot of efficiencies in this last year with telecommuting and reducing, you know, our carbon footprint and commute time and traffic, and in, you know, bringing a lot of things into this century for the Conservation District with new virtual processes and paperless processes. And so, we definitely learned a lot of things that we want to keep. But looking at opening our doors to the public and being publicly accessible again, really rose to the top of the list in terms of reopening our office and, you know, re-engaging with our community. So, what I'm going to share with you in a minute is just a very, very draft sort of outline of the first phase of a reopening sort of protocol. And I want to, I didn't send this out ahead of time intentionally, because I wanted to walk through it with you guys and share some of the thoughts that I had in generating some of the specific content and information that's in here, and open that for dialogue and questions and comments and thoughts from supervisors, because I think that will really strengthen sort of our approach. The second thing that I want to share, too, is because this is so drafty and I, and we haven't had some conversation between board supervisors, is that there hasn't been legal review of this by Ben yet, but that's the next step. So, finalize a good draft and then get some legal review by council before this goes, you know, into full effect. So, looking at reopening the office, sort of that first thought that came to mind is what is, what do we want to try to achieve right off the bat by opening our doors? And that's public access, right? That's the ability of the community members to engage with our staff, to be able to utilize our services in-house, you know, come and talk to somebody when they drop off their soil sample, or come to pick up a farm plan, or come to get some of our literature that we have available. It's those public interaction points. So, I'll share my screen. Now, that's really what this first phase is, is focusing on public access. So, and creating that sort of touch point first. I'm proposing multiple phases of this process, one to help ease with the transition and some efficiencies around doing this in a gradual process. And I'll send this out after this meeting as well, so you can read it and digest it. So, we don't have to wordsmith right now unless you would prefer that, but really talk sort of higher level and conceptually. And we continue to have changing guidance and things continue to evolve. And so, we want to, I think it would be great to field test some of these things and be a little bit more reactionary to really concrete guidance than, you know, sort of jumping the gun on some of the things that are still percolating. And you'll see that later under some more of the OPMA pieces. So, the first goal is just to open our doors literally, to not have a closed office, to have at least some of our office hours open again where our door is unlocked, and people are welcome to participate and come inside. And so, let me make sure you guys can scroll with me. There we go. And then, just making sure that safety of our community and our staff members continues to be the top priority through this transition. And none of the, you know, subsequent phases really have been defined at this point, because we'll adaptively manage those as new guidance comes up, new priorities are identified, et cetera. So, the first component of this is about office hours. So, I'm proposing almost a full office hour open, and I think this is something that we can trial and look towards opening during the full office hours, but I think it would be great, at least 10 to 4:30, and giving some transition time in the morning. I think we'll need to get into new routines as far as sanitizing, as far as staff that are coming and going for project purposes. And so, really trialing this to have the majority of our office hour time open and accessible, but a little bit of that time in the morning to take care of any necessary components or get equipment ready, et cetera. I am proposing also that we make sure that we have good signage that follows CDC guidelines around vaccinations and masking, that we'll continue to offer those items, those masks and hand sanitizer, et cetera, in our lobby for members of the public or staff, and that we'd be really clear, you know, about the current guidelines. And we'll keep those continuously updated as the CDC publishes new recommendations. This is sort of the standard that I've seen in a lot of businesses and public agencies that are choosing to open at this point. And that's that vaccinated individuals may access and enter the office building without a mask. Unvaccinated individuals may access the building, but they must wear a mask, and we'll provide those. So, we have some disposable ones in our lobby. Unvaccinated individuals that are unable to wear a mask, you know, will be provided reasonable accommodation. And so, that could look a variety of different ways, from remote service to outside service. And I think we'll just take those case by case to see what exactly the type of service is that's needed and how we can accommodate. Would the board prefer to have, I can sort of present the document, it's not super long, and then we can have some general discussion. Would that work for the board, or would you prefer to sort of take questions as they come?
I think it makes more sense to just go through your document, and then we see the kind of the whole thing, and then we can reflect back on that with questions or suggestions.
Thank you, that sounds great. One of the pieces I wanted to be able to cover as well is in-person events. One of the things that is most heavily requested from the community of our district is resuming in-person workshops and farm tours. These things occur outdoors, which is really great, so relatively safe there. I am recommending that we resume scheduling some of those. We'll continue to keep a lot of our virtual opportunities as well, because we've increased a lot of access to our educational opportunities through that platform. But there are some things that are better done out on the landscape, and it would be great to start getting back to that. We've continued to have sort of a volunteer event protocol that we've utilized a few times, you know, during the last year that was approved by the board. And so, we'll continue to have those types of opportunities, but open this up more for those outdoor educational experiences. In addition, we will not plan any sort of indoor events at this time. Our Conservation District office is not set up, it's not very spacious, you know, we have a specific size requirement. There's a lot of specific protocols about indoor events still that continues to change, and it's pretty complex for management and record-keeping. So, focusing, and thankfully, it's summer at this point as well, but focusing on those outdoor events. In terms of staff, so, you know, there are some staff that really, it's easier for them to perform their work within the office. Access to certain types of equipment and tools and processes within the office, you know, make that a lot smoother. Our administrative staff is really where this group is. Some of our project staff, you know, need some of the indoor equipment as well. And we have been allowing staff to come in and follow our current COVID policy to work as needed in the office. So, I'm essentially recommending that we continue the ability to do that, but with the addition of a new staff member acknowledgement form, and that's the last page on this document that we'll go over. And that will sort of remain in effect until further notice, until the guidance changes there. But I'm also recommending that project staff still primarily remain in telework, unless we have already made some other type of work arrangements. You know, again, it's the summer, and so, most of our- so most of our project staff is out in the field anyway. Some of them still have substantial computer equipment, like engineering computers and devices. And so we want to, we don't want to pull them into the office and then have guidance change and have to close the office and pull staff back and forth. So we'll look for bringing back the majority of the staff, the majority of the time in the subsequent phase, but really focus on allowing administrative staff back in the office for that critical internal office support. And then project staff is needed. I went ahead and put a section about board meetings in here for the board to review, just to make sure that everybody's on this page and that we have some sort of, you know, agreed upon protocol that we're following as an organization at this time. This was based largely on the conversation that we had at the board meeting in May. But that's essentially that board meetings will remain virtual until further noticed. Again, the OPMA requirements for having indoor public meetings is really complex. Our space is not set up well to manage it. And sort of that, that management and record keeping piece is challenging and also, I think, highly contentious. So until the board makes a decision that we, that they would like to resume in-person meetings or guidance changes, recommending that we still have those virtual opportunities. One item that I know other districts are exploring that we could explore incorporating into this policy as well is board members meeting together to have face-to-face conversations within the boardroom, but making the public accessibility component virtual. So that's not covered in this policy, but is something that we could continue to explore. And, and, or it is, it is covered in the policy, excuse me, as this item. So move to the last sort of section of this, and this should be at some separate page. But this is sort of the draft of acknowledgement form that we would ask staff to sign. And this is really where I think a lot of nuance and conversation might occur around this policy. So that is vaccinated staff may perform work within the office without a mask. Individuals with, that, that are within our office without a mask will be assumed to be completely vaccinated and pass their quarantine window. And staff may continue to wear masks at their own comfort level, which is obvious but important, I think, to include in here, especially coupled with unvaccinated staff will continue to wear a mask in the office, particularly in any of those common areas where other staff might either be present or accessed. So the lobby, the copy room, restrooms, lunchrooms, conference rooms, et cetera, or other shared working spaces. Staff may perform work in their own office with their closed door where other staff, you know, do not access without their mask on. Most of our staff again have closed-door offices. So that's an allowable component. Individuals that do work in the office with masks will also not be assumed to be, to be unvaccinated, excuse me, is what that should say. And so mostly I'm including those lines in here because one of the biggest concerns that I've had is that we have a really cohesive and supportive workplace culture. And it's, it's, it's something that we intentionally make a lot of decisions to protect and preserve and enhance. And so what I don't want to do inadvertently through this sort of vaccinated, unvaccinated, masked, unmasked conversation is create subsets of staff or subsets of individuals. So that's, that's where you, I think, might see reflected in some of the specific language here. And then just an acknowledgement for other staff as well to note that individuals who disclose that they're unvaccinated may not be asked for any reason why they're unvaccinated. We saw that reflected in the minutes from legal counsel recommendations. And we'll continue to make reasonable accommodations for unvaccinated individuals to perform work. And so that's, you know, continuing to telecommute, et cetera. Both vaccinated and unvaccinated staff members, again, who display symptoms of COVID-19 or have been exposed to it, or have been exposed to individual symptoms of COVID-19, you know, will ask, will be asked not to enter the office or perform work responsibilities outside of telework. So that includes field work, et cetera, where they come into contact with other humans. So that's again, across the board. Both vaccinated and unvaccinated staff who do test positive for COVID-19, you know, may return to work in person following one of the two mechanisms, either undergoing that 14-day quarantine period from the, from the last sign of symptoms, or a negative COVID-19 test result. Again, and I wanted to acknowledge item five here, the longevity and efficacy and public agency guidance around COVID-19 antibodies continues to evolve. And we'll continue to monitor the recommendations that are put out for public agencies with regards to any sort of science recommendations, science-based recommendations, and update protocols appropriately to include any specific measures around that if they become available. And then again, all staff are continue, are asked to continue good hygiene practices, you know, hand washing, routine sanitizing, and cleaning of office spaces. So this acknowledgement form would be something that would be collected from all staff that are interested in working within the office. Staff that do not complete the acknowledgement form won't be eligible to work within the office. They'll be, they'll remain in telework until either the protocol changes, or they're, they're interested or able to sign this piece. I just wanted to note particularly around the provisions in here for reasonable accommodation for unvaccinated staff, that, you know, there's definitely a lot of different types of, of reasons that, that individuals make decisions. And so we are attempting to sort of take that lens out of this protocol and make a really straightforward protocol that's sort of accessible for everyone and also is safe and something that I think is easy for folks to understand and agree with and, and comply with and still perform their responsibilities at work. So I would love to hear any questions or, or comments or thoughts from the board, or Ben as well, if, if you have any immediate reactions to this, or, or things that I might have missed.
Okay, comments from board members. We'll start with board first and then Ben. Go ahead, Betsy.
I just wondered if staff was comfortable with this idea of just taking people's word for it, that they're coming in without a mask and we are vaccinated. I suppose they could just decide they're going to wear masks. The staff could wear masks to protect against that. But that surprises me a little bit.
Yeah. And that was, that, that was an intentional choice in here from a couple of standpoints. One is COVID-19 record keeping is a consideration here and not, especially with the litigation and rulings that I'm not quite sure where they'll end up around HIPAA and COVID-19 records for individuals. I would prefer that the district not keep or house any personal COVID-19 medical information for employees, just because of the, the disclosure laws that are, are being challenged around that. Ben, we, we talked about it a little bit last time about some allowances in HIPAA for that and anticipating subsequent litigation on it. I would also say that again, our-
Sarah, I understood the question as whether we should ask members of the public who are not wearing a mask to produce their vaccination records. I think we can. I think that could also have a chilling effect on our public service. And it might be better to have other protocols. In fact, we might want to put up, you know, some temporary screening around the reception table, a, a, a sneeze guard, and also have a UV, in, a, a UV equipped air cleaner that, that is placed next to the reception desk. I, I think that that might be a more, just an equally effective but less invasive way of protecting staff from the public.
Yeah, I think those are, those are great suggestions. I would be happy to include those in here.
That said, I think we do have the right, under current guidance from the administration, to ask members of the public to produce vaccine records. It, it'll be a policy decision about how well our, the population we serve would react to that and whether we would leave goodwill with our served population by, by doing that. And, and if there's an equally effective way of protecting our staff without leaving our goodwill is the trade-off.
And, and my immediate response to that, Ben, is we receive relatively low in-person traffic in our office in a non-COVID year. So the volume of individuals is, is not substantial. I do see, I do have concerns about community response to requiring vaccination records be presented before entry. And I would be concerned, especially as we are opening such a, a small way first with our administrative staff, at some of the community reactions on site that might occur without request, and leaving, you know, one or two staff members to, to manage that component. I think if we could do more to protect our staff, like you mentioned with the screening and the air purification, that, that would be more effective and not put staff in situations, you know, of any potential contention or hostility, because that's certainly something that we've experienced prior, under other circumstances with certain community members. And that's one that gives me a little bit of, of concern.
Okay, other questions or feedback for Sarah?
This is Doug. I have several questions and observations. I think it makes sense, starting at 10. I mean, I see the rationale there. The basic question I'd ask relative to that though is, when do our clients come? And I don't need an answer to that right now. But I think when we're open, we ought to be open when people are going to come in. A second one is a little bit like what Betsy said. I'd like to have the, know what the staff thinks of this particular thing. They may not have reviewed it yet. Third item is, and I don't think we have to do this, but it might be a good, a good move. And that would be to have a public comment period on this, means we're talking about how to serve the public. And I'm thinking like just two weeks or something. We don't want to make that a big deal. And I don't think we have to do that, but that might be a good political move. I concur that legal review is important. I think that's beyond important. I think it's a good safeguard. And on the last page of the, the form that people would sign, I think if anyone, staff or board has symptoms, that that guidance should apply. It may, makes sense for us board members to sign something similar to that. That's, that's all.
Good suggestions. Helen, did you have any thoughts?
Nope.
Okay. I guess my thought is I, I like where this is headed. I do concur that we need some legal review from Ben, and also really curious what the staff has to say about this. In terms of Doug's point about public comment, an alternative to like a two-week public comment period would be to structure this as a board action and then allow the public to comment before we take that action. And I do think adopting this as a board, this being whatever the final product is, as a board, would be, would be a good thing to do. Because it then becomes an organizational commitment in terms of what we're going to do and what we're going to provide and what we're going to enforce. Because it, you know, there's some enforcement potential here as well. So when we have a final document, I'd like to see it come in the form of a, of a resolution or whatever to the board for action and allow the public to have some comment on it before we take that action.
I think that would work just fine. It's the same thing as I had envisioned.
Yeah. Sarah, do you feel like you have sufficient guidance from the board at this point to continue to work on this with Ben and staff and to bring us something a little more polished next time?
Absolutely. I think that sounds great. I appreciate your feedback. We have staff meeting next Tuesday. We'll go over this to staff. And I'll incorporate those comments. We'll do some additional fact checking and research and get this through legal review. And we will try to meet that June board meeting packet date. And I think that will be doable.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much for the, for the first, first work on this. Much appreciated. Let's, if we could go back to our agenda, there we go. We still, let's see, we have about a half hour left. We've got a bunch of things yet to do here. So maybe some of these will be kind of quick. Next up is Citizens Advisory Committee. Is that Sarah?
Sorry, I'm over here talking on mute. That's not helpful. I think it was Helen who requested this item be on this meeting agenda. The intent behind it was our recruitment, initial recruitment period is supposed to conclude at the end of this month. And is there additional targeted outreach that needs to occur? Does the board want to continue to have any conversation about strategies to help inform that? And so this was really a board discussion item for this meeting. And I will just bear really briefly, we have received interest from a couple of different individuals, but no actual applications yet. That is somewhat status quo for a lot of our open engagement opportunities is that they usually all come right at the end. And we're continuing to do rolling waves of outreach around this piece. So in a, a variety of different sectors, we heard a little bit about some of that at our May meeting. And I would be happy to answer additional questions or, or take any other recommendations or guidance or share materials with the board for board direct outreach as well.
Okay, anything from the board on this topic?
Well, at the last meeting, we talked about using Nextdoor for outreach into more diverse populations. Have we done that for this?
Yeah. So we are in the process of continuing to reach out through Nextdoor. That was a new service where we could really target specific populations. And so, yeah, that outreach is, is underway. We've already begun that piece.
I had a similar thought. That is, would it be possible to get a three-minute spot on Thurston Talks?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We've communication with them about some other article development. And I think this is a great component that we can share with them.
Helen, you're next.
Yeah, I was wondering about PSAs too, like, say through CHAOS or something like that. Are, are we doing anything like that? And is there, I mean, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, for me to know where to do outreach, it might be helpful to know, sort of, I don't know, thematic areas, like is there outreach going on with the educational community, for example, or, you know, where a, a little more fine-grained information about where outreach is occurring? a, a little more fine-grained information about where outreach is occurring so that it's possible to think about the gaps maybe?
Yeah, we track and keep really diligent records of where we outreach about certain initiative, about all of our initiatives at TCD. So I'll have Nora send out that sort of comprehensive list of places that we have done outreach um, on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and then you can kind of identify those gaps. And if you would please share uh, back with Nora where you are doing outreach. Um, one, that helps our record keeping for this initiative. And two, it also might identify new opportunities for future outreach that we can add to our list. Um, I will note that we haven't done um, paid outreach around the Citizens Advisory Committee. So we could um, in our last, you know, couple of weeks here of outreach around this, uh, we do have some uh, communications funding that we could put into some paid outreach. And whether that's radio, like you mentioned Helen, or paid social media, um, we could uh, continue to do that. I guess Nextdoor, Nextdoor would be our first paid outreach, um, because there is a cost associated with that program. Um, so we could continue to look at our budget for paid outreach and continue to funnel um, some of that towards this initiative.
Okay, anything further on this?
Uh, I do have, I guess, one more question, and that is, uh, so we have, we set sort of a deadline. Um, but we, if we only have two inquiries at this point, you know, um, how, how are we thinking about that? There's a, there's a deadline for the, for the formal outreach process, but after that, we think about the role of the board in continuing to do outreach? Something that we sort of think of as a long-term project? Or, you know, where, where does this go after the 30th?
Well, maybe, uh, maybe we should think about that after the 30th and see, you know, what we actually have in terms of applications, um, and put this on our July work session, uh, to see who, what, if any, applications we have and what, if anything further, we want to do about it. Either in terms of uh, reopening the process or, you know, whatever it might be. But we could talk about that in July for sure. And I think we probably always going to need to. Okay, uh, if there's nothing more on this, I'd like to move on to item eight, uh, the community awards. Um, I'll just preface this by saying, um, I had a conversation with Sarah a couple of weeks ago. Cause I remember when we used to all meet in the office, you'd walk in and there were all these posters about uh, farms and individuals that had won awards in the district, Farm of the Year, Land Stewart of the Year, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, I was suggesting to Sarah that I'd like to see that program revived. And Sarah, as she always is, was way ahead of me and said, oh, actually, we're actually thinking of doing that or we're working on that. So um, I said, well, great, let's give an update to the board. Let's put it on this next agenda. Uh, hear what they're thinking and get board feedback on the idea. So that's where, that's the background on this. So with that, uh, I'll turn it back to you, Sarah.
And I'll just be really brief, uh, in, in light of time on this with more to come in the future. TJ is correct. We did have a historic TCD community awards program. It was a great way to continue to provide outreach and engagement with our community and recognition of good land stewards. One of the sort of top priorities that have been identified by especially producers in our community is just recognition of, of those great land stewards that are really putting a lot of time and effort and energy into caring for their landscape and providing those, those benefits. Um, so we, I'm proposing that we'll bring um, a specific process with more details back to the board this summer. Um, we can look uh, towards the July work session for a framework here for this um, that we discussed with the board about um, sort of what this awards process looks like in the past and some of the enhancements that we've been talking about. We'll talk about award categories and how to make recommendations and process those. Um, and then what does the, the culmination of that look like? What does the award, um, you know, reception look like? We used to have a, uh, an open house um, a long time ago in TCD's history as well. And there's a lot of improvements that can be made on that in conjunction with this awards presentation um, piece. Uh, and so I'm looking at hopefully proposing an idea around maybe a harvest party. TCD Harvest Party slash Open House or Harvest Festival slash Open House, where we can showcase and highlight a lot of our programs and services and what we do. And then also honor and recognize a lot of our community partners and um, great land stewards and community members that we work with. So um, framework to come on that. Any last thoughts or questions there?
I'll just note, uh, there's a couple of comments that came up in the chat as you were talking. Um, that uh, Betsy likes it and Doug had a couple of suggestions uh, for specific categories. So let's make sure you take a look at the chat piece there too, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you. That is really helpful. I appreciate that, Doug.
Okay, um, let's move on to item nine then. Um, background on this one, uh, again, Sarah and I had a discussion last week um, about whether it might be useful to, on a regular basis, have other organizations that we partner with uh, doing work in the community, make presentations to the board. You know, every, every month we hear from our staff and we learn more about what our staff is doing. But there's a lot of partners out there that we work with that uh, our staff interacts with all the time. But as board members, we don't get to see them uh, ever, or certainly not very often. So uh, the question is, would we like to schedule some, some um, presentations in an ongoing basis to learn more about these other organizations and partners in the community? Um, and again, I, after talking with Sarah about it, I, I, I thought it was a great idea. Certainly there's some that come to mind immediately for me. Um, and so I said, let's put it on the agenda here. Let's get some board feedback on it. And including potentially from board members, um, what organizations would you like to, to bring, bring to our meeting and, and, and uh, chat with us? Um, you know, if you have specific ideas of those uh, organizations or partners, this would be a great time to throw some out. We've got a beginning list here that Sarah started and she and I brainstormed a little bit on, but uh, I'll stop there. And uh, just question is, do we want to do this? And uh, if so, uh, who do, who do we want to talk with?
If I was on Zoom, I would do the thumbs up thing. I think it's a really good idea. And I'd like to see that some of the land trusts and maybe some of the tribes.
All right, add those to our list.
I'm sort of, I mean, I don't really, you know, you could probably come up with a better list than me, but some of the, the urban agriculture folks, I mean, uh, there's the, the, the um, school program, the freedom farmers or whatever, but there's, there's also people doing all kinds of interesting work in the community. I don't have a list, you know, readily in my head, but maybe you could just make a category of
That's true.
Urban agriculture, something like that, you know, urban, urban, well, not, not farmers, but people who are interested in growing, growing food. There seem to be a number of community initiatives around that and they're they're doing a lot of interesting things and I'd love to hear about it.
Before I lose the thought, could I add something to that? I can get Ariel Rivers, who is the urban and community uh, NACD person to come to one of our meetings and give a Zoom uh, update on kind of what's going around the country with urban agriculture.
Yeah, that'd be great. I saw her, you know, present in that.
Betsy, you're up next.
I would just like to say, um, I'm pretty interested in hearing from JBLM's environmental landscape partnership. And I like, I like the tribe's idea. I like all the ideas, but those two stood out for me.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And the, the one I'm most interested in, or the two I'm most interested in is um, the uh, the Economic Development Council, um, not just the ag business part, but generally learning and understanding more about how they see their role in the agricultural economy here in Thurston County. Uh, harkening back to a comment made earlier to, uh, in this meeting too. I think at some point it'd be interesting to have the port's perspective. Uh, and a chance to engage with uh, maybe the executive director of the port or uh, maybe uh, a port commissioners, something like that, uh, to, to talk with them. So, you know, the list, we have a good list here to begin with. I'm sure we'll add to it as we think about this further. But if it's okay with the board, I think maybe we can just ask Sarah to start to, uh, she sees where our priorities are. Start to see about lining some people up that can come to some work sessions and, and uh, share some information with us and engage with us for a little bit.
Oh, I was just saying, that would be great.
Okay. We got a thumbs up from the board for this one. Sarah, do you feel like you have direction?
Yeah, if there are any additional ideas that the board has, please just feel free to email me at any time. And I can add that to the list as well as if you feel like there are any topics that are particularly relevant um, or time sensitive, um, feel free to let me know that too. Otherwise, um, I'll just move through this and start scheduling, um, you know, maybe a 15 or 20-minute presentation, conversations with partners um, at upcoming work sessions.
That sounds great. And if I, if I can encourage looking at this list and comparing that to our strategic plan and see which ones would help us further that.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Doug. I think crosswalking those would be the important, especially to identify where there might be gaps.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, that moves us to updates and announcements. We'll start with the board. Um, let's see, I'll see you first, Betsy. Do you have anything? Nope. No from Betsy. Helen?
Um, well, speaking of the T, the, the climate mitigation plan, they are getting back up and running. And I think they're having a steering committee meeting on June 28th from three to five. But I have no idea what they're talking about. Um, and then I just wanted to note that uh, the, the Buildable Lands Report was accepted at the last uh, TRPC Steering Committee meeting. And I just wanted to, if, if you could indulge me for a couple of seconds, some of the key points out of that report. Are, oh, that wasn't my dog. Um, is that Loki? Uh, some key points are that we still have 56,400 acres of farmland, but we are still losing them at a rate of 3,000 acres a year, which leaves us less than 20 years. We keep going at that rate. Um, and we still have a 90, 196,000 acres of timberland. I don't know what the rate of loss is there, but we should, you know, it's still kind of a bit hair on fire with the, with the loss of, of agricultural land. Um, there was a lot of talk about, that I also wanted to mention, because we've just been talking so much about telework. They had somebody come do a presentation about telework who was an expert. And you know, the big question, of course, and TRPC is kind of doing a study of what the impact of um, COVID was in relation to both traffic and telework. Um, this was a real evangelist that they brought in and she's darn certain that, you know, telework is here to stay. That is relevant to us because when they did the Buildable Lands Report, they found that a lot of, you know, about a third of our residents still live in rural areas and a lot of them telework or they do work at home. Um, that's not natural resource land work, but it's, it's homework. So Gary Edwards is always asking, what is this going to mean for rural areas in Thurston County? I think it's a, it's a fair question. Um, so you know, those are just some things that are being talked about. And then the other thing that I think it's good to know about, that's just kind of a general direction that things are going is uh, that there's a shift in gears towards working on the Martin Way Corridor. And that is going to be the big focus. Is they want to do inter-jurisdictional, inter-jurisdictional work on uh, basically turning Martin Way into this whole new thing. You know, they want to bring a lot of the, the growth there. And it's going to really shape urban design for the county for quite a while. And they are not um, necessarily going to program thinking about green infrastructure unless, uh, unless that gets highlighted. I did raise that issue. Uh, you know, what, what, what opportunities are there for um, bringing, bringing uh, green solutions in to help solve some of the problems they're going to be trying to solve? You know, so that's just something to watch. And that's it.
Doug, do you have anything?
Yeah, quickly, the WACD is having a board meeting uh, starting at 6:00 PM on the 21st of June. And if anyone's interested, uh, let me know and I will forward the link to you so you could uh, listen in. It's going to be mostly on WACD's budget. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing I'll report is that the uh, Farmland Group with Olympia met again last week. And um, we have one more meeting in early July before we go to the Land Use and Environment Committee with some recommendations. Um, and we uh, so I can't tell you what those recommendations are yet, but uh, we will be hopefully honing in on some things at our July meeting. Um, and really the question for the Land Use Committee, uh, I think is um, are we on the right track? Do you want us to continue this work? And I think we're going to suggest to them some immediate priority issues that need, need some work and some thinking if we're going to make this real. Um, the other thing, just as a little bit of an aside, um, I've been curious because everything that drives the city is about growth management planning, right? And how many people you need to accommodate? And so I asked the question of the planner the other day of, in our 20-year planning in Olympia, how many people are we planning for? And he said, it's about 20,000. Uh, and based on what I know of the um, standard American diet, takes about two and a half acres to feed an American a year. So the question there becomes, where do those 50,000 acres that it takes to feed those 20,000 new residents come from? And or how much of that are we willing to set aside in our community in terms of just like owning our own impact? Versus saying, oh, it doesn't matter where it comes from. We'll import it from somewhere else. We'll impact other communities' futures and, and goals and desires. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep pushing that issue fairly strongly and reminding the policymakers, hopefully at the Land Use and Environment Committee, that uh, you need 50,000 acres to feed 20,000 people. So you know, let's, let's make sure that we're, and we can't get all 50,000 in Olympia, but let's make sure that we're getting as many as we can in Olympia and the urban growth area. And then of course, working with our regional partners across the county um, for the, for the remainder. So anyway, um, that's the end of my um, piece. Uh, I see a hand from Leah there. So Leah, do you have something?
Very quickly, when you use the term farmland group, are you talking about farmland loss?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, uh, Sarah, you have anything further to report for us?
The only thing that I want to uh, chat with you about is the scheduling for our uh, board and staff summer picnic. Um, I, the date that has risen to the top uh, for board and staff, coincidentally, was the date of our August board work session, which is why all of you uh, might have been available. Um, so I just wanted to have some conversation with the board to see what your preference is. If that is something we want to entertain trying to schedule. if that is something we want to entertain trying to schedule after the board work session concludes, or if the board would look further into the month of September. And TJ specifically as our host, what works best? Other than that date, there isn't another one where everyone can come. We'd be missing a couple of folks all the way around. So thank you to Doug, who pointed out that August 10th is in fact the work session.
I mean, go ahead, Helen.
I was just saying, it works for me.
And what we, I would suggest that maybe what we try to do is perhaps if we have things we really have to address that would be done at that work session, maybe we could try to have our July board meeting run a little bit longer or our August board meeting run a little bit longer in order to not do the work session and carve out this time for the social interaction.
You mean skip it completely or?
Yeah, I guess that's the short way to say it.
Well, it would be easier as far as bringing food.
A lot of boards and commissions and things that I know, they always take August off anyway. This seems like August is the time nobody wants to meet.
I don't see any issues with that from our end. I think a lot of our important business will take place either in July or September, to be honest, for our regular routine business. And I think as an organization, we deserve it to get together and share good food and recognize our accomplishments.
Okay, so I'm not hearing any strong desire to either move it to September or to have a board meeting. So it looks like Tuesday, August 10th. Is that the right date?
That's correct. As long as Doug, that works for you, correct? You pointed out the board meeting conflicts.
Okay.
I guess it helps if I unmute. I said yes.
Okay, great. So we'll work with that. And maybe Sarah, you and I can kind of touch base about timeline and some of the logistics at some point, you know, after this meeting.
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Item 11, Board Meeting Agenda Development. Do we have a draft agenda for the board meeting to share? And, okay, there we go. Can we make it slightly bigger? Okay, so we've got our consent agenda with minutes, financial reports, our state master contract, which we've got information on, and then, of course, the contract on the feasibility study, partner reports, standing COVID reports. Note here, item four, Executive Session on Performance Evaluation. That is scheduled for tonight. I suggested in the chat, agreed with Sarah, that I'd like to bump it to the board meeting for two reasons. One is I have to be off of this right at 5:00 tonight. And I really think it would be good to have David in on that and to have all five of the board members able to interact on that. So if you're okay with that, we'll do that executive session at the next meeting, at the board meeting. Okay, and then there's a couple of other things here, work session topics, general reports, et cetera. Go ahead, Doug.
Zangle Cove.
Yes, the Zangle Cove, right? Thank you, the one that we did not do today.
And then under the, okay, got reopening on the COVID. And then the other was on the center. Now, I'm getting a message that says my battery's low. Jeez. Identify stakeholders for the center and what our criteria are. So Sarah can talk with Beckwith.
Yep. Okay, that's under the CEC. I'm guessing that that message, because I see it too, I'm guessing that is Sarah's battery is low.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I should take that personally or not.
Yeah, and it now says that the organizer is experiencing technical difficulties. Well, it looks like we got through what we needed to get through here.
Were we, were we going to circle back to the, to the Citizens Committee or the, what are we calling it? The
I think we were going to do that at the July meeting because that would be after the application period is closed.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, right, of course.
Yeah, okay. Sarah, do we have you back now? Doesn't seem like it. And I think we've done what we needed to do here. So we could have a motion to adjourn before our five-minute session timeout here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye, Samuel.
Moved by Betsy. Is there a second?
Oh, heck, I'll second it.
Seconded by Helen. Betsy, we'll do a vote. Betsy?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. We made it before we got booted out by the go-to-meeting people.